All right, let's call the meeting to order. We will call Sarah.
Here.
John.
Here.
Rick.
Here.
Mike.
Present.
Nathan is here, Doug is excused. Pleasure to be here.
My pleasure to be here. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Item three, consent agenda. I understand that we need to push items nine A and nine B, table them for a future meeting.
Yep.
Any other changes or considerations on the consent agenda?
No, not today.
Is... No change of address, you guys are on only agenda elsewhere. So, do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
I have a motion, I have a second. All who's in favor say aye.
Aye.
Nays? Okay. Item four, public input. This is the time and place for discussion. Items not already on the agenda with a time limit of three minutes each. Anyone? Anyone?
We're on that agenda.
They're on the agenda. All right, move on to five A. Discussion of possible action in reference to change of address at eight ten Hill Ridge Drive. This is your subject.
It is.
As I understand it, you want to change your address to Washington.
You see in the back, this picture here, they have requested to have a detached garage. They had planned on it being a pretty easy project. I talked to Mike about his space and he wanted to put in this size of garage and I said, yeah, I guess we didn't really talk about where, but he had a whole acre lot and he wanted to know if his lot was big enough. So, when I got the building permit, he had already had the product being delivered for the building permit and instead of going the variance route and trying to do that, we didn't feel that the language of the variance through the Board of Adjustment would fit this because he doesn't really have any obstacles in his backyard with the shed, so it really wouldn't fit that criteria. So then we just kind of got creative and I asked him if it'd be kind of a pain, but if he'd switch his address to Washington Street, since he's on the corner lot, that would make this shed in his rear yard. Typically, I guess I wasn't around when they created the ordinance as it is where they have no garage or no structure in your front or side yard. I don't think that ordinance was put into place for over an acre lot. I think that was more for your standard lots through town where you didn't want a garage sitting in front of a house. So, they're here to present their case, but I just wanted to fill you in on all those things about the background of it.
Yeah, we have a picture of the garage.
Do you have?
Yep.
Yes.
Yep.
A picture of the garage.
I don't think they have the... Yeah, they should have that. You have the sketch drawings too, right?
Yeah, I believe so. I believe all that, is it worth it on that? And then the picture of the lot itself?
Yeah.
Okay.
So it's a corner lot and basically to put the garage back, it's... We're taking out a bunch of mature trees to take it back. In our backyard, we do have a septic system because the city doesn't have sewer up to our lots, so even though we're in city limits, there's no sewer system, so we have septic system, so that eats up pretty much our backyard. So, where are you going to put this garage? And so it gives us a little bit of our side yards. The one side is by Sulliffe Road, so our neighbors across the road, or it's basically that's what you see, it is our garage is right by Sulliffe Road. And so, we just have limited options. We take out these big trees, we move our basketball hoop, we put it in a place that doesn't fit for our lot, or we have it where it's at, which makes a lot of sense. And we've talked to our neighbors and they're fine with it, with the placement, so... But the one thing I'm requesting is, I don't quite understand why I would have to change my address to do this, because we've had our address for 12 years. It doesn't affect anyone except me going through the hassle of changing my address and so I... That's what's hard to understand is...
I mean, is this number of name change for you, right? And this...
Actually, it was convenient enough, it would still be eight ten, because it coincidentally fits in between there. The only reason why, like I talked to you about this, the only reason why it was going to council first was because with your guys' approval, you can approve an address change and approve this as it is. If he wanted to, per the ordinance, if we kept it as Hillview, technically that is in his front and side yard, which would be a violation of the ordinance. So he could either present an ordinance change, which would have to go through three readings, or he'd have to go to Board of Adjustment and get a variance. And typically...
You won't be starting construction as long as...
Right, and you have to have a hardship. And the hardship, you know, I don't know if they're going to determine the trees would be the hardship, the septic definitely would be. That was one thing I don't think we did talk about, but they may say, okay, well, if you cut down your trees, you can get this to your rear yard and stay within the... Stay within the ordinance, but I just... I didn't see an issue based on the size of his lot, but I think the only way that we can act on it tonight would be changing the address and then that shed is in the back of his yard and he's applying. I know it's an inconvenience with the mail and just the history of the address, but it would be if you see that it's between... That eight eleven would actually be Hill Ridge. I think seven oh three is the house before it on South Washington, so it'd be seven oh three, his eight ten, and then you see the next one at nine oh four.
So his address is eight ten right now?
It's eight ten Hillview, but if we lean up for Hill Ridge, we could move it to eight ten South Washington, which is maybe a different meeting.
We've done this twice before, that I know of.
Yep, and we went over that, what we did for Blue Lagoon.
Yeah, we just did that.
We switched that to Alexander, so he could put that shed up on the highway, because same deal, they couldn't come up with, in the Board of Adjustment, they couldn't come up with a hardship.
Hardship, that's the why.
That would not allow that, so...
Is that all right with you, Mike?
Well, I'd like it to be a fictitious address, meaningless fictitious address, where, yeah, we can do it on paper here, but don't make me go and change the deed of my property to this, because what's the point? It doesn't affect anyone, except me going through the hassle of my mortgage, my deed, all when we talk about family, our connections and stuff, now we have this different address. And I have to explain to them why, and everybody would be just shaking their heads that this is the silliest thing I've ever heard in my life, so...
Welcome to the wonderful world of zoning.
Yeah. Yeah, but do you want to be part of that or not? Because Lynn County is okay with where this garage is going, it's just because of here, all they have to say is, Brandon, you can just sign off on this and it's good to go. And, you know, do you change the zoning for every... I mean, how many acre lots do we have in town here? So, this is... You know, I tried to get this garage so it looks good with the house, it's accredited to our neighborhood, and I'm sure, you know, it adds value, so this isn't something that's reducing value, so I guess...
I agree with your... You say... I don't know if you said the word ridiculous, I do. It's... We shouldn't have this kind of restriction in this situation. I know, I'd love to have the, you know, for the council to have the power to just say, oh yes, you can do this. We have to follow code.
Right.
And we have to, or if we want to make this thing okay, we have to change the code. The code is the delay that's going to keep you from getting your construction started. Can we change the address for a month and then change it back after he's done building it? Is that ridiculous? Also?
Well, I think if you did that...
Would we have... Would you have to have the deed updated twice then, I suppose?
I think we'd want to hear from our city attorney if we were to play that game.
Yeah, I would...
I know that if you did that, for sure, if it was grandfathered back in, then it would be a non-performing building, so you wouldn't ever be able to do anything other than general maintenance to it, which they may never want to do something like that. But, I mean, I can... If you guys wanted to pass that, I might get make sure that's all right, and if it's not, we may have to readdress it.
Well, the only thing I'm willing to pass at this point is changing your address to eight ten South Washington, and we can talk about... Or we can run the other things by our attorney, and if not approved, you'd be stuck with it.
I think probably the better option would be to pass something, like get an ordinance, if you passed it, say you want also in your motion, make an ordinance that would allow that, you know, a side yard, you know, if the lot was over X number of... It's got to be in the front side if it was over an acre. I think you're a...
Over an acre?
It's one point two.
It's over an acre.
Yeah, so if it was over an acre, you could have it in the front side yard. I guess that would be...
So we've got precedent violating this already?
Yeah.
Well, it's a big garage, and in front of it, it has...
Yeah, but, you know, I don't know when they got that approved, I mean, it's been three, four years ago.
Yeah.
But I guess that's...
Thirty.
Thirty.
Going out thirty past the big yellow house, that Novak used to own, down there in the woods.
And it's also a large lot?
Yes.
So I even forced them.
Lynn County already told them they could do it?
Well, Lynn County is... Okay's the building, but the city does the zoning. Lynn County doesn't do anything with the zoning.
They don't do anything with the zoning.
So that's all done.
So what big is this garage? It's thirty-two by thirty-four, so I think a thousand...
Not thirty-eight.
Thousand feet is pretty.
Thirty-two by thirty-four.
Thirty-two.
Absolute dead, machine repair.
I would prefer the ordinance change and not changing their address. If... But I know that that becomes a timing issue, or does it become a timing issue? Do we okay the commencement of construction somehow? I don't expect any resistance to the... I mean, I can't speak for everyone up here, but I don't expect that.
There's just all the change of...
I don't either.
I mean, you have to hold a public... Let's set a public hearing, which you can't do that.
Not until... Yep, not today.
So it'd have to be done at the next meeting, and then the public hearing, we'd get it in paper, so that way it'd be as quick as it could be. We'd do the public hearing on the twenty-second meeting night. If you expedited it, you could pass it all in that night.
Yeah, we could suspend the...
But their construction can't commence until...
I would say legally, no, not till that.
Tuesday, second week, second meeting in May, roughly eight P M.
And that was the only reason why I would like this for that, was because that was the quickest, you know, they were getting material delivered, and that was the quickest way that they could get this resolved, was to... And I know it's an inconvenience, especially with the postal system seems to operate right now, you know, it's a... Telling everybody, you know, you're not changing anything other than what the name of your street is.
Right.
For the same ending result.
Yeah, it's a front door replacement.
It's a creative way or a loophole, I guess, if you will, to make it work. So, that's the only thing I could do within the code. I just think if you... If you approved this and you didn't do any ordinance change, then you're going to find somebody with a sixty by forty lot and want to do this. And actually, there's one going to a variance right now for a Board of Adjustment for a shed, so... Yeah, it's just...
I don't know that you need to change a deed, because that goes by legal discretion, usually, not by the address.
Yeah.
It's a legal question.
You didn't have to talk to Jeff about his...
I didn't. I just knew he was frustrated with the process and just gives you a bad taste of building in city limits, let me tell you.
Yeah, and these things aren't set to make it a hardship for people, it's...
To regulate things.
Set to, you know, set to regulate ridiculous things from happening. This is not a ridiculous request.
No, this isn't.
It just happens to not match what we... What was put in place by a past council with good reason, or past people with good reason.
And we have to deal with it now. I mean, you know, we're trying to...
There's always unique circumstances.
Yes. Oh, yeah, absolutely. You know, when this ordinance was adopted, there probably wasn't an acre lot.
Oh, yeah.
So, not...
Very few.
A very minimal...
Very few, no question.
When this ordinance was adopted.
What if you...
I mean, do we know how long ago it was that this ordinance was adopted? We don't, so...
What if you approved the address change for tonight, so he can get started? And then at the same motion, you can put in there to do an ordinance update. We can drop this so it fits, and then we can move his address back to Hill Ridge and give it a sixty day... We're going to move his address for sixty days until his ordinance passes. Does that do that?
You're...
It's going to take a while.
I don't want to risk being stuck with the new address. If we change it, I want to be able to change it back. So, if it's not a guarantee that we can change the address back...
Are you guys... Are you guys okay waiting until May fifteenth-ish to start construction?
I am.
The builder had... There's some of this stuff's custom, like that, and everything is set to roll. I mean, I think the foundation need completed by now, and so we've been waiting to do this for many years, and so for us, waiting a few months is not a big deal, it's just it's a cost for the contractor.
Sure, sure.
That's mainly delayed, and so...
And irreliability, probably.
What's that?
And irreliability.
Yeah, that's a good point.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, he's a home builder, he's who built our house, and I mean, they deal with this stuff, so if it was delayed, it's delayed. So, obviously, we'd like to get it going, but, you know, we're not going to push this year, I'm not going to be upset. I just want to find a reasonable solution to it.
Well, and I want to... I personally want to do right by you guys. I don't want to put you guys out of something, you know, change your address, pain in the rear, right? Like, who wants to do that? So if you guys are willing to wait, we can get something going as far as the ordinance, that way you guys don't have to go through that agony of doing that.
Brandon, would this work on the twenty-second? We could do the public hearing, first reading, waive the rules, third reading? That would work, wouldn't it?
Yeah, because you know...
Yeah.
No, technically you could...
Should we get it done by the fifth, the...
No, it's the twenty-second is the...
I don't think we can get it done by the eighth.
No, because it'd go... It'd be in the paper by Friday for next Thursday, so I can't... Yeah, so I can't get it.
Until the eighth.
Do we know from our city attorney whether this can be rewritten in a way that it won't cause this problems down the road?
Well, I think, just off the top of my head, it would have to be in the front side yard in a lot that's bigger than one acre.
So do you want to run that by the attorney and have that ready for our later this week meeting?
I could have that, yeah.
Yeah, because we do meet on Wednesday.
We can have that as an... Yeah, I can get the... Yeah, I'll present that and then give him what our leave options are received.
So we need to make a motion tonight about the change of the ordinance?
Yep, so I'll make a motion.
Depending what our city attorney comes back with, right?
Sure.
Isn't that where we want to go with that?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, correct if I'm wrong, I want to make a motion to propose a change to the ordinance to allow for a garage placed in the front side yard of a one acre or greater lot. And set the public hearing for the twenty-second and go from there.
Second.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. Sarah?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Rick?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
I say aye.
Okay.
So...
May twenty-second.
May twenty-second is when we're going to...
Decent probability that this will be resolved, so I can tell the builder.
I believe so.
Yeah.
Yeah, maybe twenty-third.
If we have some action that we can take Wednesday night that will allow us to do so sooner, I'll let you know.
Yep, sounds good. Thank you for your time.
Thanks, guys, coming for the committee. You're very welcome. Yeah.
That's the risk here.
Let's go on to five B. Discussion of possible action in reference to contract with Sportsman Solutions. This is a fundraising group.
Yep, so I met with Mark and he added several different things to the contract. He added a council person to the... To the name of the people for the clients, or elected official, I guess it was. So, long story short with this is that this is basically a year-long contract. There's really no liability for us per se. They only get twenty-five percent of the money that we actually receive, and these are going after like, big companies, so like...
Coke, Pepsi.
Pepsi.
Corporations.
Corporations. He did mention that he will not... So, you know, we have our smaller drink, and I've talked, and we have our smaller in-town donors, businesses, so let's say if somebody always gave us a thousand dollars to market rep program, they're not going to go ask them for a thousand and then take two fifty of that, because then it looks like we went backwards. He said, I'm not even going to mess with that. These are just going out to big people. They have like fifteen thousand athletes in the U triple S A program. There are avenues for scheduling, for tournament production in the future, which would be like another contract if we wanted them to schedule different people here, but just with them having part of this program, this is going to open the doors for other opportunities later on when we get the complex built to bring these people in, to say that, hey, there's a complex in Lisbon this weekend that has a tournament. The other nice thing with this is, this... They can... They get the money now in the year, so let's say if they have naming rights for Pepsi at the concession stand, they have to sell all Pepsi products. They pay now, and then once we open the doors to say, okay, we're open for concessions, then that's when the year starts. So they pay upfront, and it could be a year, year and a half before they actually recruit that.
Started growing.
And then it goes one year for that money, and then it would be additional year to be on that too, after that.
So, the Sportsman Solutions has rights to offer naming rights, or...
Yep, and we meet with them and go over like, do we want to name a ball diamond? If we decide to have one's going to be the Lisbon Lions Field or whatever, that's strictly our property, but we're going to give them all the information as to what we want named or options that they have.
Or allow them to offer as nameable.
If we just work together, nothing gets approved until it goes through us, so it's not like they come back and say, well, I got a million dollars here and, you know, this is the name of the park. It's not like that. They have... Everything's got to be approved, and they don't get any funding until we okay and then receive the money.
Does... Is there any budgeting problems because the money would come to the city first and then we pay them, or do they reduce it from...
No, because this is with your binding contract, it would be... It'd be very similar to how Grant might be, like a fifty-fifty match, or...
So they'll bring us the seventy-five percent of what's going?
Correct. Actually, they're going to bring us a hundred and then we would...
We have to pay them back?
Okay.
Okay, that's what I was asking. Okay. I don't know if that's a problem, I just...
Yep, so as long as we have to buy any contract to do it, then that's where we're covered.
Okay.
Our city attorney's gone over this contract.
Yep, we met last week on it. Like I said, he went through the whole thing, documented it up, and he said, yeah, I don't see any... There's really no liability for us, I mean, it's all, you know, there's no money down upfront, there's no... You know, like he said, if there's an issue, he changed the... If one party wanted to get out of it, there was a fifteen-day... Fifteen-day notice, he moved that from thirty, because he said if you want to get out, you want to get out. So...
What do these guys do?
So they go out and they get like sponsors for... So if you wanted to... Like, so the one example he gave is Pepsi Coke. So, he threw out, like, he's gotten a hundred thousand dollars for one year just to sell Pepsi at your complex. And so that he would give, we would get a hundred thousand, and they'd get... We'd keep seventy-five and give them twenty-five.
And they wouldn't get any income from the sale of Pepsi, just the exclusive sale of Pepsi?
Just they make the deal, we finish it, basically, solid. They set everything up, and then the agreement is between us and Pepsi, us and the Lion Energy, us and whoever, and then this binds us to pay them back the twenty-five percent.
So who's all done this around the area?
So Norwalk is where this came from, and I... Travis went over there, he was at a class and looked at the facility, and then we contacted Norwalk and I know Christine talked to him, and they've had no bad things at all said about it. And Travis said they're not even finished over there. I want to say there was like six hundred and seventy-five thousand, I think, fundraised for Norwalk. Now, keep in mind, they're...
Ten miles south of Des Moines?
Yeah, they're a lot closer.
So, ten miles south of Des Moines, but... So you've got a bigger market, but he said this is a... This would be a hot spot, just because of Sierra Valley and so forth, so...
Not even that, but Iowa City's not that far off either. I mean, we're not that far from Iowa City, but...
And the nice thing is, he also said that he would help with some of the local stuff if we needed. Like, he could get to the point of getting the deal and then just turn it over to us, and that would count towards that. So, I think it's just, you know, that is a lot of money if you get a million dollars, but for them to go do all the work, and then potentially in the future, they could... You could expand this to new scheduling, where they open it up to all their U triple S A teams, and they schedule this park, and, you know, I don't know what they get for scheduling that or how that works.
I think you're not going to open it up to U triple S A teams, you'd be a bit more involved with this.
All right, do I have a motion to approve the signing of the contract?
I make a motion to approve the signing of the contract, or the Sportsman Solutions.
Do I have a second? All right, Sarah?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Rick?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
I say aye. Moving on to five C. Discussion of possible action in reference to current mini hoe, backhoe, and purchase of new mini hoe and end loader.
So we talked during budget, if you recall, we set aside a hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars from next year's budget, starting in July, for new end loader. I don't know if you guys saw it, it's sitting out there. The mini hoe is underneath the new pavilion. When the storm hit, we were putting water and sewer in there. The track is ripped on the mini hoe, one track. The cab is not twisted, but dinged up pretty good where it rattles, and then the glass is broken out of it. So Travis would like... We'd already talked that the mini hoe, yes, while it works to do things, for instance, like when you go out to dig a grave, you still got to get somebody down the hole to clean it out, so it doesn't get everything like you want it, it's not the right size that we need to do that type of work. So, we'd like to trade the current mini hoe in, along with the backhoe, and get the end loader that's out here and it's... and get the end loader that's out here and a new cat mini hoe, um, that can do everything, bigger than what we have. Uh, be able to do everything that we need to do. And like I said, we have a hundred and sixty-five thousand that we budgeted. We can get the trade-in and do everything for one fifty-six, two fifty-four. And the only thing that does not include is a cage blade. And that would be for assistance in wind and snow and especially the cold sass that you put on the front of the end loader. So.
So when was the last storm?
March thirty-first.
The one that knocked down the construction?
When was the last concrete? Before, after that?
Yeah, it was the.
I never heard anything about that.
What's that?
The mini hoe was.
Well, we always discussed last week.
We discussed last week, the mini hoe was on there, but we did, we said fraklessly we thought it came down and it didn't hit it. It wasn't safe enough. I mean, with that thing teeter and we had to get the, the rest of the building down before we could get to it. So like when the insurance guy came through, we, we were over there and he took pictures of the building. We said, well, there's our mini hoe and thankfully it howed, I don't know how, but it doesn't look like it's damaged. And then it wasn't until we tore it down after he was here and went in there and they moved the mini hoe out where they could get it out and they noticed this.
So what did the insurance tape you for?
Well, we have to get, they're coming back with a price to fix it, to send it back into insurance. So.
Yeah, they would, oh, they'll just wanna fix it.
And we fix it before we trade it in.
Essentially, we're gonna pay this, but we're also gonna recoup, it wasn't, to me it was made sense to present it this way versus having to get it fixed and then go try to sell it. Our trade-in wasn't gonna go up, but it was gonna cost us to fix it.
Right.
If that makes sense. We used money ahead doing it.
Like you use this, this, this used to do the bridges and stuff?
Yeah, so now like right now, we're gonna go out there and if we add one, we're gonna run the cemetery with that hoe.
So we're not gonna fix it. We're gonna trade it in. We're gonna get insurance return anyway.
Okay.
That matches it? They're gonna give you fifty-six thousand dollars in?
No, that's. That fifty-six thousand is for the backhoe. Trade in the backhoe and the mini hoe in. That's both of them.
The backhoe too?
Yeah. Cause if you buy the end loader, you don't need backhoe.
How many hours is that mini hoe?
We bought that mini hoe, used the hour meter, never worked in it.
Will the trailer fit on that Newman?
The trailer.
The trailer that you hold with?
Yeah.
I don't know, it did, to me, my, just my quick overview is, is we're spending a heck of a lot of money. I don't know where we got it all.
Well, basically, I, I understand the, the, throw the end loader out because that's already, you guys already proved to do that through the budget.
Yeah, we.
So that's a hundred and sixty-five thousand that you already approved. Now, this is gonna be a cheaper end loader than what was approved, so we can always back that down. But at the end of the day, what it's gonna come down to is it's eighty-eight thousand for the new mini hoe and we're getting a trade-in of fifty-six, five hundred for the mini hoe, current one in the backhoe. So really you're thirty-three thousand, two hundred and seventy-seven dollars to get a new mini hoe.
Well, I'm gonna say, I'm gonna make a motion to approve this purchase and here's why. Is because we'll approve eighty thousand dollars to fix a history center that makes no revenue, but we will not upgrade our equipment that clears the streets and does the things that need to be done. So I make a motion to approve the purchase of the new equipment.
I would like to talk, I'd like to talk.
Yeah.
On this.
No, I, I think there's.
I'm not, I'm not a jester. I think if they, they need the equipment, they need the equipment. But if, if times have changed, we got a can, we got a can out here and the new mini hoe, we're just gonna buy, I don't see three bids.
Cause we just gave you the cheapest of the.
Well, I wanna see all of them. Maybe we might want, maybe we might want them. So we, as far as I always knew, we got this other thing that digs the graves that we bought when I was here. That this greatest, greatest thing that you started up and it sucks the dirt out. We don't use that no more or?
That was for when we kinda reached it with the equipment. That was never for an everyday thing. That was just when stones wouldn't allow equipment to go in there. We use that for the sewer plant for water valves and storm sores. That's what that was purchased for.
But you can use a roller purchase, right?
Yes.
And this increases your efficiency, right? And doesn't the one piece of equipment lift higher to load trucks?
So we shattered three windows in our skid loader moving those blocks. Those blocks are what we gotta move all the time. It's not safe to move them with the skid loader. We got Rexco to donate last sauerkraut days their, their loader so we can move the block safely. That's always been our number one concern was to be able to move the stuff we need to move safely and efficiently. So that's the purpose of the end loader. Also, after the duration, we wanna talk to any community around any part of that duration line. If they had an end loader and their skid loader, they could move twice to three times the amount of brush with an end loader because they, you're turning your tires instead of sliding your tires. So when you're on dry pavement.
Does that come with the gravel?
No. That comes with the two yard snow bucket.
So what happened?
We'll still be using the one that leaves now. It'll fit every skid loader attachment we have. This thing will fit all of that.
What, did you get gravel, right?
Yeah. Just to answer Mike's question, so budget purposes for the end loader for luck for next year was ten thousand out of EMA set aside or capital improvement for moving the blocks. Roads capital improvement was fifty thousand. Um, roads, or I'm sorry, roads capital improvement was twenty thousand. Roads, just their budget absorbed fifty thousand. Lost fifty thousand. Water fifteen thousand. Again, that's for moving snow, uh, using it to fill holes after water mains. Uh, sewer ten thousand and solid waste ten thousand. So that's gonna be your chipping and your dump work and your, like you just mentioned, the streets. So that's where you get your sixty-five thousand.
How much was lost, you said?
Fifty.
Fifty?
So that's where the money for the one sixty-five that's currently budgeted for next year.
You said eighty-eight K is the cost of the new mini hoe, the trade-in of the two pieces of equipment's fifty-six, five. What was the cost of the new end loader?
Um.
Roughly a hundred and twenty-five?
One fifty-six, two fifty-four minus eighty-eight, seven, seven, seven. A total together would be one fifty-six, two fifty-four. And again, we're, I'm more than happy to get three bids.
I got them.
I just thought, I just didn't threaten them off. I just thought.
Are they the exact same equipment, equipment?
No, actually the cat for the mini excavator is a bigger unit than what John Deere quoted. And John Deere after their trade was forty-three, three, five. Their.
And what kind of warranty?
Three years.
For both?
Yeah.
For all of those?
Yeah.
Or does that be standard?
Yeah. Yep, the cat end loader or cat, uh, mini excavator, the blade also angles on it. Um, we had, I had no intention of bringing this right now. I was gonna wait until July. But I got a phone call before my last conference from the original quote that I gave you during budget time for that end loader we were looking at and said that they're over a year out now. So, and they can't guarantee we have it a year and a half from when they talked to you. So that's when we switched what I was looking at. Well, then obviously the mini hoe got banged up and we were trailing it back, track started splitting on it. And I said, well, maybe it's the time we can save enough money to do, to do it for now.
You can get this equipment right away though, or are you waiting to hear it get?
That would, wouldn't leave. That's just here on demo for. Yeah, we done that, and the cat, there's a John Deere demo that we did down there. Um, I can give you the price for the John Deere here in a second too. Um, we actually did like running that better than the John Deere one. And helped that it was cheaper too. But I, we loaded, we loaded brush with it and we loaded dump trucks and rock with it. Um, I had the other two guys do it and I didn't tell them what the price difference were. I said, just run both of these and tell me which one you want.
And they everybody left that one?
So what's, uh, when can you give me?
Give what?
This one here.
It'd never leave, it'd never leave. It'd never leave. They just, they just let us demo it. Yeah, if we decide you don't wanna do this tonight, which is totally your right, that's going down Illinois because it's sold. And there'd be no guarantee on when we get our next one. I don't know.
What's the next piece of equipment you think we're gonna need to purchase?
Well, I, I think I brought this up before, but, um, somewhere down the road here, pretty quick, we're gonna need a new pumper with fire truck. No, I'm, just let, hear me out here. And so, um, I've already started working with Maggie's for your financial, uh, bonds since we just got some paid off. Um, that's gonna be a pretty extensive purchase. Uh, the next piece would be a one ton duly. We were gonna put on that as well. So we did the back, uh, what was it? The dump truck and the fire truck before, we're gonna do the duly and the fire truck this time. Or, you know, present it that way. But, um, the fire department wants to get rid of that sliding unit. Travis used that a lot, uh, for all the watering that we do around town summertime. So I had asked him if he wanted that sliding unit before we put it on dump deals. And, uh, he says, well, I'd take the old truck. He goes, we wouldn't have to, he goes, I wouldn't have to get a, do, we had these long for a while. You guys get the new stuff, give me that truck and we repurpose it. Then what he, one thing he requested was, you know, I told him we want, we were probably getting a five fifty flathead. And essentially what happened is that truck, ten, fifteen years, we're doing that as another repurpose. Obviously, at some point, you're still gonna need to do a dump truck, but that's ideally the next purchase, that will be a thousand, with a hundred. For being, oh, a hundred. Yeah, so, uh, one forty, five hundred is for the John Deere.
Well, I'll just, just remember that we took highway dirty we need to take care of. We need equipment for that. So.
Please ask a question. This isn't, this isn't to fast track anything. This isn't to do, this is, when the insurance guy came, um, I don't remember the day it was, I think it was a Tuesday actually after our last meeting. That was still all in one piece and.
I'll second Sarah's motion by.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Sarah?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Rick?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye, it's a lot of money folks and it's gotta slow down.
Okay, but I'm using my own equipment now, Mike. It's my skid loader I'm using.
All right, let's talk about that second. I don't think that's right. I just like the movement. I don't think that's right. Unless you get paid for it.
I, it's fine. We're gonna, this is gonna solve that problem, but that's what I.
No, I'm just, I'm just saying, and, and it's been a long time that I'd like to say this. Instead of buying this, I wish you could've just bought your pickup because you use your own pickup too. And I think that's, I think it's wrong. I think if you work for an organization, that'd be like Dove going out and driving his pickup around patrol. It's not right. If you hit somebody, what happens? Who's, who's at fault? The city, you? You see where, see where we're coming from?
Well, hopefully we don't have to worry about it anymore. You guys just approve it.
We just approve the statement.
If you're using your own stuff, that we should provide.
Re, reimburse him something somehow.
But that's what, I mean, Brandon was kinda trying to say. That's what we're trying to do is everybody sees like, okay, this is a big ticket item. But we're doing stuff in the background trying to save us money so we can get the equipment we need to actually.
Instead of.
I understand that and I appreciate that, but we are spending a ton of money.
You already approved it, Mike.
I know.
No, not now. I talked to before. You are, this was already budgeted. It's actually eleven thousand, nine thousand less than what you okayed.
We already wrote the check now, it's not.
Did you follow me though? And during our budgets, we, you said okay back in December, January.
And now what I am saying is, is we are spending a ton of money.
Mike, do you want your streets plowed?
I would like to have a street.
Okay, but I'm just saying, we, you didn't have any calling passing eighty thousand dollars to the history center that you were against because nobody comes in there. But we can't, we can't get these guys new equipment to actually plow the streets and keep, keep the community safe. That's what, that's what I'm trying to say is, we're spending other ridiculous money besides this.
Yeah, I support Sarah's assertion that, that, yes, that we've sunk a lot of money into something that's, that's very little return. And this is a, a very good return. This will a, address our concerns about.
I agree. I'm just working on the overall picture of how much money we are spending.
But other, just keep in mind, other than lost money, which is tax money paid on goods. Okay, other than that fifty thousand, this money is spent on capital improvement out of all of those funds minus fifty thousand for roads, which it's a, it's a road equipment. I mean, that's its, that's, that's its home. So realistically, of budget money, we're only spending fifty thousand of.
City money.
City property tax money to get these two brand new machines. Everything else, yes, while some of that was budgeted money, but it's capital improvement. That's the whole point of why this money's put into these accounts is to buy this stuff. And then the fifty thousand was from lost, which is, if you look at the treasurer's report, there's a million dollars in lost.
And the justification for this is this equipment's gonna speed up their efficiency and lower their time. This is like buying them an extra employee for a period of time. A half, half employee or something like that right here, maybe a whole one. So this is a good investment. I'm, I'm supportive. Any other discussion? We'll move on. Five D, uh, discussion and possible action reference payment to interstate power and light in reference to electricity in the sports complex and well number five.
So this is the bills are kinda broken down into three bills, um, for the sports complex, uh, to the well. And, um, the new wood pole that they have to put in there. So, um, again, this is running from to get power from Jackson Street over to where the power stopped at the end of Third Avenue. So it's that hole. Now, as I put in there, there is gonna be additional costs to extend the power. So once the ball diamonds go in, they're gonna have to run that main up, up the sidewalk. Um, and then there'll be also money that we'll have to pay from our local contractor to pull the power for other things too. But this is just to get power to the, to that area.
Will there be lights emitting when it's all done on the whole thing?
So, yeah, that's the goal. Um, the other thing is to, I try to do, um, to save money is when they put in the streetlights, this is not the streetlight quote, but when they do that, we're gonna have a streetlight going one-way and then on the same pole, have the parking light light come off that. Just to save adding additional poles within the lot. If you notice a lot of them, they get them in the middle of the parking lot and then they just get hit and, so. But then the lights are actually inside, so this is just to get power into the complex. And then just so you know, there'll be another bill for these guys when, when we do get the complex going and they run. and they run power up to like that middle concession stand, we'll have to pay to run it right up to the, would be the main.
Yeah.
The main, two hundred, whatever they have, would be. So that'll come later on.
What percentage of the total project does this cost? This is, it looks like it's a, just advanced. Am I wrong?
You talking, this is... No, this would be, this would be to get power to the...
Just the first bit?
Correct, because see like for the well, then they're going to have to run power to the service. Once you get the service there, so they'll have to run power there, just like they will the sports complex and then the, the street poles, they'll have to get power there and then your wall pole. You know, like if you had a house there, it's going to put the power from you to your house, but then you got to pay it up. Some guy has to come hook it up. And this is already in the works. Obviously, we're a city and they know our timeframe, so, um, we'll get this signed and if you approve it. But I don't know if we have an option of it.
Any other discussion? Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
You have a motion to approve?
Motion in a second.
I have a second. Uh, Sarah?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Rick?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
I say aye. All right. Moving on to six A, public hearing for budget amendment number two for fiscal year twenty-three. Do I have a motion to go into public hearing?
Motion to go to public hearing.
I have a motion in a second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, we're in public hearing at seven fifty-three.
All right, so some of these, keep in mind that may have been approved during a previous budget that never got done or the payments didn't come, so we had to move the funds. They were still there, uh, had to move them over. And then you're going to, I'll explain a little bit more down here about the building, but, um, so your expenditures, it's five hundred cemetery G I S pin placement addition purchase. This was when we approved the bid for the cemetery purchase. They, they talked about doing the extra pin locating. Uh, you guys went ahead with that, it was an additional cost. Um, this is to amend that to, so when we get that bill, we have the money to pay for it. Um, twenty-eight thousand for Barnes. This is for leftover payment that's left over there at McAmel that didn't get spent out of last year's budget, that was in last year's budget. Um, thirty-four thousand for sports complex, um, pavilion. All right, wait a minute, sorry, hold on. Thirty-four thousand, uh, for sports complex pavilion and the phase, phase one change orders. And then thirty-eight thousand, two hundred for the sports complex pavilion rebuild. So you have to show the money in and the money out. Um, so you'll notice down below in the revenue, the insurance payment, so those are washed. You have to show the money coming in and then going out. So when it's all said and done, we're only paying for it once, but you got a budget for it twice because now we have to rebuild it. And then, uh, a hundred thousand for the sports complex sprinkles. And this is going to be for the soccer field. And that is it. That, that's, just so you know, this sports complex, that, that fund is its own fund. I don't know what's left in there, it's not a lot, but they'll cover this and, but we're about done too, so. And put one more payment for change orders to Dave Schmidt, so...
Okay. Any further discussion? All right. Uh, do I have a motion to go out of public hearing?
Make a motion to go out of public hearing.
Have a motion, I will second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. We're in public hearing. Item six B, resolution thirteen dash twenty-two-three, approving budget amendment number two for fiscal year twenty-three.
I make a motion to approve amendment number two, approving the budget amendment.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
A motion and a second. Uh, Sarah?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Rick?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
I say aye. Item six C, public hearing regarding ordinance update for water rate increase. I'll make a motion to go into public hearing. Do I have a second?
Second.
A motion and a second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, we're in public hearing at six, seven fifty-six.
Um, so this is, uh, I have to talk to Maggie at Spirit Financial and this is for the bond payments. I don't know what this turns out to. Uh, she's requested two percent increase for water and three percent for sewer, sewer debt. And this is just for bonds that we approved before and to stay on schedule. Um, looking ahead, as long as things do not, they kind of plateau, um, it does look like next year is a one percent and a zero for sewer. Um, but if the price of things go up and we're paying more for water main breaks and different things like that, then we'll have to reevaluate that, but, um, anyway, that's what it is.
Any further discussion or questions? All right, uh, I'll make a motion to go out of public hearing. Do I have a second?
Second.
A motion and a second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, uh, six D, discussion in public, possible first reading ordinance zero-two dash twenty-two-three, water rate increase.
I make a motion for the two percent water increase.
All right, we have a motion, I will second. Uh, we will call, uh, Mike?
Aye.
Rick?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Sarah?
Aye.
Can I say aye? All right, six E, public hearing regarding ordinance update for sewer rate increase.
Make a motion to go into public hearing.
I have a motion to go in, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, we're in public hearing at seven fifty-eight.
Sorry, I guess I kind of talked about both of them, but...
You did, three percent increase.
So sewer is going to have three percent.
Three percent sewer, sewer, yep, sorry.
For Maggie.
Yep.
Any further discussion or questions? All right, I'll make a motion to go out of public hearing.
I second.
A motion and a second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, moving on to six F, discussion possible, first reading ordinance zero-three dash twenty-two-three, sewer rate increase.
I make a motion of the sewer rate increase of three percent.
All right, we have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Um, all right, Sarah?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Rick?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
I say aye. Okay, uh, item seven, correspondences, anything?
Um, nothing tonight.
Okay. Moving on to item eight A, city engineer report.
He got rerouted coming back from vacation, so I'll go through it as much as I can.
Okay. Then we'll go on to eight B, public works directors report.
All right, the water main that we're going to tie in tomorrow on Market Street by Jackson and get that tested. And once that's approved, we can start tying residents back into there. Um, we are completed on North Jackson and Fifth Avenue. That area and the two residents there have been tied into, so that's all passed. That, we have found quite a few surprises in here that our records as far back as we can go show one thing and they're surprisingly not. Um, so when we do, when we do these door hangers and these letters, this is on the assumption that the information we have is correct. We won't know until we actually turn that valve. On Third Avenue, for example, everything shows that it ties in to Monroe. So the last block of Third should have had water. They didn't, and we did our shut down. So everything we do is coming with a surprise. We're not doing this out of, out of spite. We're not doing it as unprepared. It's just, it's coming up and these are accidents, these are parts, things that happen with, with that. Part of the other problem was with Third Avenue was we had a water main break at the same time we were doing that shut off, so we lost water in a bigger area than what we thought we were going to. We are going to have little hiccups like that as you have a lot of pipe exposed. Um, this pipe is very old, so that's why we are replacing it. So it's not, it's not uncommon to have a break on us before we get it unhooked, so. Um, just as a general public, if they can bear with us, we're trying, we're not doing this on purpose. Trust me, the, the phone calls that I receive and Brandon receives, we don't enjoy getting those phone calls, so we're doing everything we can to notify you well in advance. How many more have we set up today?
I think there's sixty, sixty.
Yeah, we hung sixty more door tags today for the next few weeks in there. And we're trying to let them know. Um, it was a little bumpy because the, where we started was big tie-in areas. So now that we branched off of those areas, it should be a little more smoother because we know the valves work. We've already tied in with new on one side and we know the other one's old because we had to shut those off to get it, so we should be, should, I mean, I'm not saying we're not going to find something, but our surprises should come less and less. Um, we got, uh, leaves done again today. We went through town and got those done tomorrow and Wednesday. We're hoping to finally finish up with brush. We're going to start in one end and make our final sweep through that. Other than that, I think that's, that's all we got.
On the subject of the water, uh, project, we received a door hanger to boil.
Yes.
We never received a notice to, we don't have to boil anymore. How do we find that out? How does this...
So we, we, we've tailored these up six different times. Um, so now what we're doing is putting an issue date, um, it was supposed to be for three days. So now we're putting the dates to boil through, like the one today.
Okay.
They're doing four twenty-five through four twenty-seven at five P M.
Okay.
So people understand it. Keep in mind, it's an advisory, it's just because of the D N R rules that regulate that. Um, but that's what we're doing now. We've also, um, put it on Facebook. Um, we're going to do a Monday update just to give people an idea where everything's going to be. We're going to try to talk to them about what, what's happening. So right now, we got the one hundred block of East Market. They're going to be going to the one hundred block of West Market and then they're going to be going up Washington Street. Uh, the plan is when the market streets are done, the paving company comes in, we're going to get that all fixed up, repaired and, and start that as they go. Um, so just, I guess, just be patient and if, if, if you think you have an idea of a, of a better way or communication, we're all, no, I'm, I'm just, just as a general thing, like we're learning as we go.
I like the one door hanger idea and, and a period of time to boil. Um, I'm sure if for some reason your test came back poorly three days out, you'd issue another door tag or something.
Correct, correct. At that point, it'd be an order.
Yeah, at that point, yes. So with, with no information, I can stop giving my dog a bottle of water.
Well, unless he wants a bottle of water.
You begin to accept it now.
And we are trying to be cognizant of doors that people use versus, you know, some may have a front door that don't. So we're just, we're kind of learning as we go. Um, just try to, you know, we're not perfect, I guess, and, and, um, I, I wish I could show you. Travis has got pictures of some of the things that people did and it just doesn't make sense why they, it's like they had, they used what they had to make it work for now and they said, we'll go back to it and never went back, so, um...
Well, you're obviously documenting everything now, so...
Right.
Yeah, I've got over fifty points.
Your successor sixty years from now won't be surprised.
What that's, that's just it is, um, Drayton's helped with this a lot too, is we, we go now with every bend in the pipe, every chunk of metal that goes out of that pipe, it gets shot with elevations and the G P S and it'll get, we're actually going farther than what the engineers even ask for. They just need like a water valve. Well, we're going in there and we're labeling it, if it's ductile iron on one side of that valve and C nine hundred plastic on the other side, we're putting that in there. So whoever comes after us will be able to look at this and, you know, within, within an eighth of an inch of what's what.
It'll be Drayton's kids, by the way. Thank you. Um, was that it for, yeah, works, all right, thank you. Um, move on to eight C, um, partisan rec director report.
All right, well, uh, we're coming up on the halfway point of the soccer season. Um, that's gone really well. We started registrations about three weeks ago for, uh, summer ball, T-ball, coach, bench, baseball and softball. Um, that'll start towards the end of May. Um, I've been working with record sign and design on a couple of different ideas for a sponsorship, uh, project for the sports complex. Um, we're getting far with that and I'm hoping to have something to present to you guys real soon or kind of give you an idea of what we're going to do. Um, other than that, I've been mowing, weed eating. Um, we have our walk-through at the school tomorrow for the ball dance, so I'm trying to get all that stuff done. That's why it was late tonight, um, trying to get that all ready to go for tomorrow, so... What's that?
You talked about park cleanup last time.
Oh, park cleanup, yeah, I can talk, I, I don't know if I mentioned that last time. Our park cleanup that we do every year, we have a really good turnout again. Um, park looks great. I thank everybody tremendously for showing up and helping out with that. So it saves me a lot of time. Um, we get it done in about two hours instead of me going out there and raking all the leaves by myself. And it's nice to have people that care and go out for that, so I think it looks really good over there.
All right, good. Any questions for Drayton?
Oh, I do. Whose bathroom's going to open up?
Um...
This week.
Yep.
Um, it's, the reason I, the reason I ask you that is I asked Brandon Wall about, do you sit, it's going to be, uh, do you try to do it like during camping season? I don't know if the kids just don't use the bathrooms or what, but, uh, I was enjoying the soccer over there and you see a lot of people go over to them and they must not know what the porta potties are because they'd like to, everybody start to pee behind their cars now.
Really?
Yeah. I think, uh, you guys, you know, I don't, I don't know what you're scheduled for when you open up, but I think if there's, I think the porta potties, I don't know what you pay for them or, or what. I mean, sometimes the weather is bad and freezing, but, you know, I'm, I'm just, just making a suggestion that once soccer starts there and a couple of sessions of soccer, you just, just open them up.
Yeah, we talked, the plan was the fifteenth and then left the forecast and like this morning it was twenty-four at six o'clock this morning when I got up on my truck. And I don't know that that's going to necessarily freeze, but...
I'm just saying, I'm just saying, the gate is supposed to be...
That, well, that, that's a block wall, so, I mean, there's no insulation on the pipe.
Yeah.
So, I mean, that three-eighths line that's feeding that sink, that's sitting there. And not saying it would, the chances of it freezing are better than if we get them. And the rule of thumb was, we always wanted a week of no freezing temperatures in the future. And that's, so that's, that's been the whole bottom this year.
I'm good.
Yep.
Do, do we need signage or something to say, please use the porta potties until we can open this or something?
I don't think they'll open it this week.
We're going to be okay.
Win the next soccer game tomorrow. Maybe piss it on the table.
Okay. Thank you, Travis. Uh, moving on to eight D, uh, police department report.
Not a whole lot. Uh, we did the drug drop event here at the Lisbon City Hall this weekend. Uh, collected about twenty-seven pounds of drugs from that event and a pretty good quantity of sharps, actually. We usually don't take sharps, but due to that event, um, we, we collected them at that point. We'll run those up to the land, uh, get those disposed of properly. And we'll be turning in, uh, to the D E A tomorrow, about three hundred and twenty-two pounds that we've collected between the two drug drop boxes, um, one here at City Hall and one over at the police department in Mount Vernon, um, that we collected over the last year or so. We're going to deliver up about three hundred and twenty-two pounds for that. Um, Esteban, uh, graduated the academy on Friday, was back in town and started his first shift today. Um, so I spent the day with him, making sure he could get signed into everything and then brought him over to run him around a little bit, so, um, you'll be seeing him around a little bit and he, uh, maybe, maybe having some kids in your school district pretty soon, I think, so it'll be good.
Good.
All right, very good.
We welcomed him.
Yeah, he's great, he's good.
Lewis gives me a ticket.
You could, you should.
I have, I have my right to do it.
All right, thank you, Doug.
You're welcome.
Um, eight E, ambulance director report, anything from, uh...
Uh, I think that's in your pack.
Oh.
Uh, fire call. I think the police department, yeah, police and the ambulance is in there.
Hey, I've got a question, if you can answer that. If, um, on the ambulance part, if it's telling you... If, um, when the ambulance department, if county issues this, this essential service, Cedar County? That's Cedar County border to border to border to border. How will that affect the ambulance service for... So let's just say if ambulance service, their district goes to, uh...
Charles?
Well, let's say they go out here to, uh, what's that, Pennsylvania, the place of the Dallas, Cole. It's usually, for example, he calls the ambulance, we respond.
I think that's Lisbon, there.
It's, it's, but, but Cedar County gonna take it all over, is what I understood.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
For the ambulance wise?
For the districts? They would have to petition the state to change the districts.
Even though it's in that county?
Yeah, they would have to petition, I believe.
Yeah, 'cause the districts are issued by the...
Yes, I, I mean, that's associated, I mean, they're like, they're like defined, I mean, not that it can't be done, but, um, you mean if they go to a full current county system?
So like, so Adams, well, you...
They're gonna have two ambulance, it's one set.
So they're gonna have a Cedar County ambulance service? Gotcha. I've not, I've not heard of it. I, I know the essential service, but I have not heard of, um, the district.
I know the districts are defined by the state.
Yes.
And so you have to petition the state if you want to change your district. The funding side of that, from the essential service aspect, is just a funding mechanism, and then how they want to do that, or how they draft it up for their services, and each county is different with that.
Is that gonna be out of the... Is it gonna be out of mechanics still?
Nobody knows.
The county run it or...
Yeah, nobody knows.
Oh, nobody knows how it's gonna...
They're still working through a bunch of...
Oh, are they?
Things came to report last week, and that's what they recommend. I don't understand you. Because like, you know, you fire that you fight, on that square, you're gonna be, they won't respond to you.
Yeah, that's too bad.
All right, any other discussion? We'll move on then. Uh, eight F, Fire Chief And City Administrator Report.
Uh, Fire Department Related, we had, uh, high school careers class come down, um, last week, uh, for a tour and presentation. It's kind of a chance to do a little recruitment for those that are graduating high school. It was a senior class that did that. We had some firefighters down here to go through that with them. Uh, been pretty busy, um, the last couple of weeks. Uh, one question come up about burn bans. Um, currently, there's only two counties in Iowa that have a burn ban on their way out west. Technically, Lynn County never did have a burn ban, it was only the city of Robbins. Um, Cedar County did have one, but it's since lifted, so, uh, just keep in mind, if you live in Lynn County, unless it's a recreational fire, um, and a recreational fire, you're fine, they're not... The world's largest burn pile, and you have a bag of hot dogs, so just know that. Three by three, and, you know, continue, so. But regardless, anything, um, outside of a friendly hot dog roast, you need to get a burn permit regardless of what it is, and those can be done at, uh, Lynn County Public Health, and you can get it right there, uh, and give you thirty days to do your burning, so. A lot of people's coming to town, you wouldn't believe the amount of people that come from other places that burn, burn permits a lot of things, so just wanted to give us a feel of that. Uh, City Administrator Report, just as a reminder, the joint school board meeting is this Wednesday at seven P.M. Um, this should go pretty quick. I did on, it's been over a month probably, send the contract for the, for May, for the fall down lease over to the school. Um, with our corrections, I have not heard anything back. We're supposed to sign that tomorrow night, so I don't know if no news is good news, but that, that's one topic that'll be brought up. Other than that, it's just gonna be, I know that they're gonna be starting a project over at the school for expansion. I think it's just gonna be a, a chance for us to share information as to their projects, our projects, so that we can all work together for the se, the safety of everybody involved and kids and the convenience of everything, so that should, uh, be pretty quick. Uh, the well project is, you know, they ordered the stuff, and I know Dave gave the update. The plan is to start over at the complex or at McAmel's where the well site is on May eighth. Uh, completion to be around the first of August, so, um, or testing around the first of August. Um, we talked about the water main project. Uh, Brian Blanks has started today, um, worked about four hours, um, doing door hangers. We gave him a tour of all the parks and areas we mow, and then, uh, he ran some water samples for us, so he has started. Good to have him. YTT, uh, along with Dave Schmidt, we're meeting tomorrow at nine A.M. out at the Sports Complex. Uh, there's some things we need to discuss over there, primarily the grass on the south side is not coming up as it should, so we gotta get a plan put together with them to figure out. They still believe that it's gonna grow, um, as they know. And also looking at the north side, while it is growing and we're gonna have to mow it, I don't think it, you know, we're gonna be tearing it up to put fall downs in, so it's not a huge deal, but I'm hoping that that's not what the south side's gonna look like as a final product, so. I don't know if it was a combination of they planted late or what the situation is or the weather, but, um, it's probably a little bit everything, but we're gonna discuss that tomorrow and try to come up with a plan.
So, I got a question. Yeah. If, uh, let's just say they don't, uh, how long does it take for the grass to grow?
Well, the email I received, um, thought it was twenty, twenty-five consecutive days with temperatures over sixty for the year in May, the type of grass.
So if they, if it doesn't do that, have, have, can you tell them, stop it? Or is it just gonna bring up water out there, rather than that?
We, we got a backup plan, uh, through the, the, a different company to help us out. So we're gonna talk about that tomorrow, and I'll probably do that next meeting when I bring it up. Lots and lots of building permits and, uh, footing inspections. Just as a reminder, if you're doing a building, um, that's over a hundred to twenty square feet, it's gotta be permitted through Lynn County, and that is at Lynn County Planning and Development under the Building Division, and it's a real easy step-by-step process online to get that done. Had the annual work comp inspection and meeting, that's always a fun one, uh, we pass, so I guess we'll see you next year. History Center Project started today. They had, uh, originally said middle of April, and then they had called me last week at the beginning of the week and said it'd be more towards May, into May. Then they called at the end of last week and said we're coming Monday, so they're here, and, uh, they're starting on the brickwork because it's not warm enough for paint stripper. And, um, I thought if they're gonna replace the bricks, it's less paint stripper that they're gonna have to use because they're gonna have to take away some of those bricks that have paint on them, so. You'll see, they've, they've not made some progress today already, so. Uh, there's also, uh, within the budget of historic preservation, um, it was less than five hundred dollars, and they had it in their budget, but we got a, uh, R.C. Tech came down and put a camera on the pole down here, so they can do a time lapse or video or take pictures off of that camera that's shining directly onto that, so. Uh, if you wanna know what that camera's doing, shining on a building, that's why, so. Uh, this Saturday is more kind of personal, but it's about Jake too, but, uh, out at Tin Roof, they're doing a second blood drive. Uh, this is through the University of Iowa, it's the DeGawen Blood Center. There's several t, uh, time slots that are filled, however, there's still twelve to fourteen spots open if anybody would like to be a part of that. Uh, call three-one-nine, three-five-six, two-zero-five-eight, and, um, again, that's to, uh, for, for a blood drive for Jake, so.
What hours is that?
I'm sorry?
What, how many, what, when's it open?
It's nine to one.
It's, yeah, and they said mainly the openings are after eleven. So it's like eleven to twelve forty-five is a lot of the openings, so. And then, um, last thing I have, just a request, um... I am planning to be gone on vacation at the next meeting. Christina was going to be here along with Travis, and the meeting was probably gonna be pretty light. Unless something comes up where I would need to figure out a way to be on, um... Would you guys have any problems starting that meeting at six o'clock so Christina could be here? She's got a conflict later that evening that...
Why don't we just go with you? Where are you going?
Nashville.
Go down there and meet?
I'll already be there, so, um, I don't worry about it.
So anyway, if, if it's good to start at six, Christina will be here, um, but she has a conflict later that evening. I don't know if that's possible for the rest of you. And that is on May eight?
Eight.
I have no conflicting... Six o'clock, everybody?
Yeah.
That work? I appreciate that. All right, I'll take any questions that you have. Been pretty busy here.
I know.
Any questions? All right. I guess that was a pretty thorough report. Was that just Fire Chief, or is that, you got...
No, that's, done wrong.
Uh, all right. Eight G, Council And Mayor Reports. I don't have anything, so I'll say Mike, what you got?
Eighty-one.
Okay, Rick? John?
Saturday, May sixth, at, uh, ten A.M., there's gonna be a puppet show in Erddich Hall, and, uh, there's gonna be the kickoff for the summer reading program on, uh, May sixteenth, five to six-thirty at Hills Bank in Mount Vernon. And on the eighteenth, the Thursday of May, there's gonna be a blood drive at the Lisbon High School Cafeteria, two-thirty to six-thirty, and they mentioned some gift certificates involved with that program. That's all I have.
Okay. Thank you, John. Sarah, you have anything?
I don't.
All right. And we'll move on to nine C, Possible Closed Session Pursuing To Coevile As Section Twenty-One Point Five. One eye to evaluate professional competency of an individual whose employment, hiring, performance, or discharge is being considered necessary to prevent needless and irreparable injury to that individual's reputation, and that individual requests a closed session.
Are they done? You gotta prove what it calls.
They said, yeah.
All right, so...
All right.
A closed session has...